Good evening and welcome to the September 19th Media Borough Council meeting. We are here in the Joan Hagan Council chambers, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to start our meeting as we always do by standing and pledging to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a very special event that I will share in a moment. About a year ago, maybe a year ago, we opened up an opportunity to have a junior council member for Media Borough, and we opened up applications, and we had some applications, and we had one applicant that was very excited, but unfortunately, the schedule last year with commitments in high school didn't make it easy for this individual. Tonight, however, we are going to welcome to Media Borough our junior councilperson, Lydia Petrucci. She has actually been sworn in since the 5th, when we had our workshop meeting, but tonight we're going to make it official, and I would ask Lydia and her parents to join me at the microphone. You will introduce yourself after we're done, if you have any comments. So I'm going to spake these words. This is the Pennsylvania State Association of Borough's Junior Councilperson Pledge, and you said this to me two weeks ago, but now we're going to say it in public. I, Lydia Petrucci.
I, Lydia Petrucci.
Do solemnly pledge.
Do solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position of Media Borough Junior Councilperson.
That I accept the position of Media Borough Junior Councilperson.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
Observe Borough Council meeting rules.
Observe Borough Council meeting rules.
And actively participate in Borough business.
And actively participate in Borough business.
I understand that I cannot vote on any issue, and I cannot attend executive sessions.
I understand that I cannot vote on any issue, and I cannot attend executive sessions.
And if you would just sign your name right here, and then I will sign that I administer this to you, congratulations. And not to put you on the spot, Lydia, but if you had anything you wanted to say, this would be the time.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm very excited.
We're going to try to figure out how to get you here, but we couldn't make another space, so, welcome. Thank you. It's awesome. It is, it's great. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Our first minutes are from the August 1st, 2024 Media Borough Workshop Meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the August 1st, 2024 Workshop Meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And I'll note that I believe that was the meeting we held at the firehouse. It was terrific. The next meeting minutes are the August 15th, 2024 Council Legislative Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Some of them.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the August 15th, 2024 Council Legislative Meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We now have the first of two opportunities for public comment and privilege of the floor. Public comment can be delivered two ways. Those of you who are here this evening would be welcome to stand up and state your name and address and make your comment. We also have public comment via email. If you're not able to make it to the meetings, send an email to comments@mediaborough.com. Ms. Repino, do we have any comments this evening?
We do, Mr. President. I'll start by saying I have two that did not provide their address, so I cannot read those, and one non-resident. I'll start with Catherine Scharr from Manchester Avenue. So let me get this straight. The Borough wants to eliminate gas-powered blowers from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. This is laughable. Don't we have more important issues than this? Susan Turner from North Monroe. I am writing this in direct opposition to the proposed gas-powered leaf blower ordinance. As I understand it, the intent is to limit usage of gas-powered leaf blowers between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., as they pose a health risk to children. To me, this seems very underhanded and is being used to pave the path to eventually limit the usage of all gas-powered machinery and equipment. Brian Tipping, East Lincoln Street. I want council to actually listen to what they are trying to do and understand how ridiculous this is. You want to ban blowers, but just between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. during school times because of the kids. That's great, because that's when they are walking to school, but what about the end of the day when they need to go home? Is the afternoon different from the morning or weekends, when they're playing in their Andrea Hannigan, East Sixth Street. The proposed ordinance concerns every property owner in the Borough. I've spoken with various neighbors and friends, however, and they were not aware of this happening. Please explain how this has been vetted to the people of media. When the plastic bag and stroll initiatives were created, the council reached out to businesses to get feedback and to see if this was a major issue before proceeding. Deb Meiken of North Lemon Street. What is the public health threat that leaf blowers create between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. in the morning during the time students walk to school? Next one is Cheryl Carlos from Meeting House Lane. What about the cars driving by or diesel school buses stopping at bus stops? What about the ride on mowers or the tractor mowers? It's like, let's eliminate the tiniest problem, but don't look at the elephant in the room. Now I have something on my computer. Addie Chinella, West Baltimore Avenue. I would like to encourage you to think of the health and welfare of the children and adults, including the crossing guards and meter readers, who are negatively impacted by leaf blowing on weekday mornings. They should not have to avoid the sidewalk or leaf posts in order not to breathe dust Julie Smith, North Olive Street. I would ask council to prioritize the health of our community, especially our children, over business profits, and begin the ban of gas-powered leaf blowers just during the time of our schoolchildren are trying to take a healthy walk to school in our walkable Linda Emery, West Second. Please pass and enforce leaf blower ordinance 1168 in order to protect public health. Not only will it benefit pedestrians and community workers, it will promote the sustainability of early-morning habitats. David Director, North Monroe. I am writing to strongly support the proposed gas-powered leaf blower ordinance, restricting only mildly the hours in which such blowers may be operated in the Borough. Peter Devaney, Centennial Avenue. As a longtime Borough resident, I strongly support the passage of ordinance 1168 restrictions on gas-powered leaf blowers. The high levels of toxic emissions skewed out by inefficient two-stroke gas leaf blowers poses a significant risk to the respiratory health of children and crossing guards, as well as other citizens with asthma and other breathing issues. To Packer, North Olive. I urge you to give priority to the health needs of our children and crossing guards over the convenience of landscapers. I think that's it. There's no address.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone present who would like to address council, please feel free to stand at the microphone. We just ask for your name and address, so that we can document you.
Hi. My name is George Che, president of Philip Jason Memorial Foundation. So we operate the Philip Jason Museum at 100 East Lincoln Streets. And the reason I'm standing here is because October 24th, 2:00 p.m., we have a signing ceremony between Media Borough and the Bozong County for sister-city cooperative agreement. And the, just looking at, it's such a long time ago. Media Borough already passed the proclamation to that effect on December 19, 2019, and the Bozong has been just delayed because of reasons, internal reasons. And the Bozong mayor, along with the governor of South Chorla Province, are coming to this signing ceremony. And the reason between Media and, significance of Media and Bozong is that Dr. Philip Jason, he was a resident at Media from 1925 to 1951, until he passed away. Then his daughter lived in that house until 80s, then we purchased it, and we use it as a museum to teach our young generation Korean American history. And so there's a lot of visitor from, whenever there's a VIP comes, they do visit this house. And in fact, the year 1999, president of South Korea, when he received the Liberty Medal from Philadelphia, then he went on to receive the Nobel Peace Prize. Only place he visited is this house. And in fact, if you go in there, there is a signing that he did when he was a young man, in saying that Dr. Philip Jason should be the first president of Korea. So it's pretty significant in there. And Dr. Philip Jason is the first Korean to receive U.S. citizenship in 1890, and he was also the first Korean to receive a U.S.-educated medical degree from George Washington Medical School in 1892. Then Korean government, he ran away from Korea because he was involved in coup, which says government should be governed by people, not by king. And it was successful for only three days, and so ran away, and ultimately, he ended up residing in the Media. Then he's also first, Korean government, once he became a reform, invited him back to Korea. And so when he went back in, then 1895, and he was invited back, then he published the first Korean-language newspaper in Korea. That sounds strange, you know, it's in Korea, so of course, it's a Korean language. But prior to that, any written language was Chinese. But he felt that in order to educate general publics, it needs to be easy language, so he decided to publish a Korean newspaper. And then he comes back, then during the Japanese colonization, in the year 1919, there was a huge peaceful demonstration throughout the country in March 1st, 1919. So when he heard that, he got so excited, and then he gathered Korean leaders south of Korea, because a Korean leader cannot come out of Korea. And then about 150 people gathered in Philadelphia, and have three days of a First Korean Congress to unite the people. And then there's, he carries the, he was elected to be a president of the First Korean Congress. Then after the three-days conference, that they have a peaceful march from, it's called now Place and Players Theater. Back then, it was Little Theater. So from there, they marched to Independence Hall, and they declared Declaration of Independence. So he was an important figure. He's a huge figure in Korea, and so that's why we're using that to teach our young generation. Just to give you a perspective, so not only, like a president and past prime minister, visit next Monday, in fact, I am carrying 90 seniors, 9-0 seniors, to Korea to visit some of the historical sites of Dr. Philip Jason. And I hope I can come back in one piece, but the, and so that just gives you an idea of the kind of figure he is. And then, starting May 1st, 1925, to February 1st, 1927, Museum of American Revolution is going to display his travel luggage, along with, there's, if you visit, I will welcome you to visit this memorial house, and in it, there's a video that was taped of that march, Independence March in 1919. And so when Museum saw that, they said, we have to copy this and display. So there will be displaying those two items. And so that, even Museum, when they look at it, that his significance in terms of independence of Korea, that the, which was influenced by American documentation, document of Declaration of Independence. So it's pretty significant. So, coming back to original comments, that the, on October 24th, we will finally have that agreement signings. And I imagine there's no actions needed. I don't know what actions needed from council, since it was already passed.
I'm very grateful, and I think I speak, if anyone else would like to speak. It's wonderful that we have this in our Borough, and we welcome the opportunity to have a sister city where we can not only talk about the history with young Korean children, but with all of our children in the Borough. So thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I will make every effort to be there, if I can.
Yes.
And the mayor will be there.
Of course, yes.
So thank you so much. Anyone else?
October 24th and 2:00 p.m. ceremony, I don't know, is the location, can I say?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, location would be front step of Media Courthouse, and so.
It's a Thursday? Is that correct? I think so. I think the 3rd. Yeah, I think it's a Thursday. It might be a Friday.
24th. We can look that up, but.
It's the week before Halloween.
Yeah, I believe it's a Thursday.
Our mayor will be signing.
I think it's a Thursday.
Mayor McMahon will be signing that declaration.
Wonderful.
That proclamation, excuse me. And.
And Bozong document pretty much reflects the same things. And the only thing I noticed that's different, I mean, they're talking about economy, educations, and cultural exchange and all that. They also had gardening in there, because Chorla Province is big on gardening environment. And so, in fact, they're putting a Korean garden in New York, and that's another reason for that trip. So I think that would be wonderful, to have that kind of exchange.
Wonderful. Again, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is anyone else who would like to address council?
Michael Jordan, 620 North Monroe Street, Media. Mr. President, can I ask Kevin a question?
You can address a question to me, and then if I would have him respond, or he can respond. Or he can respond. Yeah, later.
Kevin, are we going to have a dinner, senior dinner this year?
Yes. Senior luncheon is November.
Yeah, it's on the calendar.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep. Thank you, Michael.
Tickets are available October 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
That was a very speedy public comment. Michael Straw, 499 West Jefferson Street. I have a couple of questions. So previously, I had, in the workshop meeting, provided public comment on my position on the ordinance 1168 that's being brought forward. We've heard public comment pro and con tonight already on this ordinance. I still have a couple of questions. I don't understand what the enforcement will be like for this ordinance, and what will the penalty be if somebody is found using a gas-powered leaf blower? Well, not leaf blower, sorry. Yeah, leaf blower. There's so many power tools these days, whether it's a weed whacker, lawnmower, I can't get it in my head. But those are, you know, concerns that I have, because I don't know what the cost would be on a landscaper if they're using one, or, you know, for a resident. I'm also, I'm hearing more and more that this is a public, you know, health issue related to the school. So wouldn't it be more of an idea to just focus it around our schools and say that this is something that would be banned from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. during the school hours or during, at the school, during 8:00 to 9:00 a.m.? Because, I mean, you know, sure, it affects the crossing guards and whatnot as well as the students, but there are other people that don't even have students that walk past their home at any time of the day, whether it's 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., or, which this is not part of the ordinance, when school's out, which, that is, I think, a hole in this ordinance as well. And I encourage the council to possibly table this ordinance to another month, because one of the things that I know that all of you were elected for, and what I tried to get elected for, I think we all agree on this, is good governance. There are such things as good governance, and it's, you know, we rarely see it in Congress anymore, but we do see it at the local level. And I want to make sure that this is a good ordinance. The fact of the matter is, is we're protecting kids when they go to school at 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., but we're not protecting kids when they leave school, or the crossing guards when they leave school. And in the end of the day, there's just as much pollen out there, and there's just as much leaves, especially in the fall, in the afternoon, as there is in the morning. So if you're going to do a restriction, at the very least, you should plug in both times of the day when students are active. But second, I really think that it should be more centered around the geolocation of where the schools are, because if this is a public health, you know, situation, more so for students and individuals that have to brave leaf blowers, then really, I think it should be focused in those areas. Because, I mean, in the end of the day, students have to leave the school, and there's only so many exits, and there's only so many entrances. But regular pedestrians, when we're, you know, walking around town, if we see somebody that is blowing, using a gas-powered leaf blower, I'm going to walk to the other side of the street, or maybe I'm just going to take another route to where I need to go. But maybe a student, or obviously, a crossing guard can't do that. And so maybe it would be better just to have it located in those areas of the town and not specifically borough-wide, because, I mean, people could use, I, you know, I'm not going to be the type of person to say what you do at 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and if you have a gas-powered leaf blower, but if you do, if you're using it in the confines of your backyard, why should we police that? That's, in the end of the day, that's my concern. I get where the public health component is, and I thank you for being concerned about public health for our children. But I think there are ways that you can make this ordinance better to focus on your intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Hi, I'm Amy. Is that good? All right. Hi, I'm Amy. I'm very nervous. I'm Amy Felton-Lewis, 630 North Providence Road, and I'm on the corner of Youth Way and Providence Road. I don't understand why is it just that the gas, the gas-powered and not the electric? And because if you, if you can't use the gas-powered, then you're going to use the electric, and what if the area is damp, or there's like puddles in the area, and people can trip on the cord? People can, the cord will be, the cord will get wet or damp, and zap, you know? So that's my main concern. And somebody said, what about the landscapers? I mean, it's their livelihood. I'm very nervous, and I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. You did great. You did terrific.
If I were singing karaoke, that would be a different story. I'd be holding on to the microphone.
We could set up a machine and have music playing.
We'll let you know the meeting details for that one.
Yes, yes. Borough karaoke. That's a great idea. We should get Rick on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi. Kevin Kellogg, Weneesh Jefferson, most people know me. Just say no to this thing. Just call it a day. Thank you. Of the 14 people who emailed in, 10 of them had said no, so anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll now move on to our Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Forman.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. President. So I have just a couple of items to share with the public. One is that we are, there's a residential parking program survey that is going to go out to residents. If you have a blue residential parking sticker, blue residential parking sticker, you will be getting a postcard from the Borough later this month, and we're looking to update our parking program and modernize that process with, you know, digital registration, annual registration, those sorts of things. But we want input from the residents before we change the program, so please, if you get the card, there's a QR code there, please go online, take the survey. It will be open for the month of October. Secondly, I have another survey I wanted to promote, which was the Bicycle Survey. I think I've mentioned this at another council meeting, but it's just worth mentioning again. We applied for the Bicycle Friendly Community application with the League of Bicyclists, American bicyclists, and they are in the process, when we did that application to them, they now are in the process of collecting data about the experience of biking in Media. And so that will be online until October 15th. It's been pushed out through social media. It's also on our website. Please go online. If you are, you know, familiar with bicycling in our community, we want to hear from you. We want to know about how we can make it a better, safer infrastructure for you to bicycle. Then the third thing is, I wanted to just highlight that on Third Street, between Jackson and Monroe, is a new sidewalk installation. It's called Parky Pave, and it is made out of recycled tire material, and this is incredibly porous material, and it's there to help protect our shade tree roots, as opposed to cutting and putting down concrete. And so this is kind of a new installation that we're testing out. We've heard really good things from other communities, that it works through the freeze-thaw cycle and all that good stuff, so wanted to just draw your attention to that, since it's right outside our front door. Take a look at that, see how it looks. It can come in all different colors, and that's something we're going to be testing out and piloting in the Borough to help protect our tree roots. And that completes my report.
Wonderful. Are there any questions for our Borough Manager? Hearing none, we'll move on to our Engineers' Report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of updates on a number of different capital projects. Starting with Plum Street, as you may have noticed, some work at Plum Street has stopped, and there was a reason for that. We were meeting with the contractor, meeting with the designer, to compile all of the information that we've received to date, to make sure that if we are to go do excavations, that we are being judicious to avoid certain utilities that were discovered in the field. There were some water lines, some sewer lines, and some electric lines, that surprise, surprise, just weren't on any maps that we had at the beginning of the project. So with that shuffling of the deck, it took a little bit of time. However, parallel with the actual physical work in the field, and probably just as important, are the review of the submittals, which means that there's a whole litany of items that have been ordered and have been approved by the design team. So those are specialty items, such as tables, chairs, umbrellas, different types of pavers, different types of lamps, lights, foundation, shade structures. All of these things really had to have a very low-level review to make sure that they're in compliance with the plan set and that they're available. And with all of those things being ordered, this material is coming, so this wedding is happening. We're moving forward here, right? So the baby is coming, that's right. So it's just a matter of getting Mr. DePaul back into the site to make sure. So it's just a matter of getting Mr. DePaul back into the site to make sure that we are staying on schedule. At the moment, we don't anticipate any, we anticipate staying generally faithful to the original schedule that we set up. And again, I can't emphasize at every single meeting to really stop and pause and thank our business community who have been affected by this project, one way or another, especially those, our friends at Deals, Jaco Taco, the Cafe Isla, and our yoga, Sarve Yoga, Sarve Yoga? Again, I appreciate, I cannot say enough, can't appreciate their patience and their good humor and their tolerance during sort of this very disruptive period. We had this morning the bid opening for Philip Green, which again, I'm sorry to hand this out so late, but then we wanted to do some last-minute crossing of I's and dotting of, crossing of T's and dotting some I's, just to make sure that we're in fully compliance. We wanted to get this done naturally because we wanted this project done by the end of the year. I think we'll be very pleased with the results when we get to that portion of the agenda. We're well under budget, and I contacted the contractor, and they are eager. They can, they can get started as soon as in the week or two, as long as we can get through those contracts. Great news. Also, out for bid is our road program. Our bid opening is September 24th. So those streets that are going to be paved are Meeting House, a portion of Fifth Street, between Jackson and Monroe, Edgemont, down by the Chase Bank, down by the school, including that area of the traffic circle to make sure that gets a fresh coat of asphalt, and then up by our rain gardens at Jefferson and South. So a lot of activity here in media. Unless there's any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our engineer? Hearing none, we'll move on to our solicitor's report. Joining us tonight is Ms. Megan Burns, who is here for our solicitor, Bob Scott. Welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Thanks, all. I'm, as you said, I'm now an attorney with Bob Scott and Carl Ewald, and I have no report tonight.
Thank you.
That, unless there are any questions, that concludes my comments.
We have a couple of things to task you with after we vote, but thank you so much for being here tonight and welcome.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions for our solicitor? Hearing none, we'll move on. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Busy, we, busy month last month. We had 780, 708 complaints. Some of the, I guess some of the worst ones were the assisting other police departments, 39, that's a big number for that, assisting the public, 54, hazardous conditions, 14, couple of those too, 16 traffic accidents, and 66 police informations. So, busy, busy month for the police. Also, the Media Borough Street Camera System continues to be an asset. Every month, accidents and crimes are reported, where the cameras were instrumental in assisting the officers to accurately investigate the incidents. The newest cameras were installed on State Street at Church, at Church Street. We are waiting for the State, the State and Monroe cameras that should be here, I guess, in the next week or so, I'm hoping. Also, the Civil Service Commission is moving forward with the testing of the hiring of the police officers, police officer. Written test was conducted in August, and every candidate that passed the written test will be administered, and an oral interview will be next week. So that's it. Lot going on in the police department these days.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do note that when we get to Councilperson Gelman's report, there will be an update on the hiring process for our police chief. Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, we'll move on now to our council committee reports. We'll start with our Transportation Committee and Councilperson Trey Herman. Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements tonight. However, moving on, I make a motion to ratify the approval to authorize the advertisement of bids for the 2025 road program.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And this is what Mr. Mattson is talking about, the road program?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by, I'm sorry, all those in favor of ratifying the approval of authorization, the advertisement of bids for the 2025 road program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Herman? Hearing none, we'll move on to properties and public works. Councilperson Joy Washington, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also have no liaison announcements tonight. I have two items of business. First one up is the approval of carriage, of the Carriage House lease on the second floor with the Media Youth Center. And I am offering that up in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Carriage House lease on the second floor for the Media Youth Center, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome to the Carriage House.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We have to go back for just one second on the Transportation Committee report. I believe it should have said, ratify the approval to authorize the advertisement of bids for the 2024 road program instead of the 2025 road program. So if we could perhaps move that again with, and approve that with 2024 instead of 2025, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman?
I apologize. So, make a motion to ratify the approval to authorize the advertisement of bids for the 2024 road program.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ratifying the approval to authorize advertisement of bids for the 2024 road program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And back to Ms. Washington.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And my next item of business is the license agreement with the Media Arts Council for the use of office space on the third floor and the borough offices. And I'm presenting this in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Washington, could you just explain a little bit for those in the audience or those watching, you know, that, you know, what the process that went through to get here?
Okay, yeah. So this came through properties. And we just looked over a request to use any available office space in, in our offices on, on the borough grounds. We have an available office space for them to move into. They're just going in, and we have a license agreement with them that just, that just states that they'll be moving their own equipment in for internet, IT purposes, and we're going to provide, like desks and chairs, and maybe a couple of other things. But, but it's just an agreement that's just explaining what we're going to be responsible for and what they're going to be responsible for. And I think it's going, and I think it's also like a month-a-month thing, and we will provide them maybe 30 days' notice of if we need to use that space.
Great. I just wanted to clarify for anybody that had questions about it.
Yep. It was also explained at workshop.
Yep, which is not recorded, of course.
Mm-hmm, they're not recorded.
Great. Thank you so much. Motion's been made and seconded, and we've had discussions. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the license agreement with the Media Arts Council for the use of office space, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilperson Washington? Hearing none, we'll move on to Finance and Media Business Authority. Our Borough Council Vice President, Elizabeth Romaine. Ms. Romaine?
Thank you, President Pekoff. A couple of announcements from the Media Business Authority. So just want to let everyone know that next week is the last week for Dining Under the Stars. It's the 22nd week of the season. It's been a really great season, and even last night, towards the end of the season, was really robust and vibrant. So this is one of our signature events. If you want to get one last Dining Under the Stars under your belt, next week is the last week to do it. Another great event that's coming up is the Return of Fall Festival. If you recall, this is an event that Media, the Media Business Authority took over a couple of years ago to have a signature fall event. I think this is the third year that they will have been doing it. It's Sunday, October 6th. Rain, I think the rain date is maybe the next week, but we're going to hope for good weather because it's also an Eagles bye week, which means not so many people will be distracted. And it's, it's a really popular event, and we have a very, very long waiting list of vendors. I mean, the competition to, to really be a part of it is quite great, and it's a, it's a wonderful new, new-ish event for the borough. So encourage you all to put that on your calendars. One other, or one other announcement, excuse me, from Finance is, it is budgeting season. So if you see Brittany or John in the Finance Department, you may want to high-five them. Brittany characterized budgeting as fun the other, the other week, or the other day. I'm not sure that I necessarily share that sentiment, but love that she does and John does. But it is a little bit of an intense season, so certainly, you know, get them a coffee if you, if you see them as we kind of navigate over the next couple of months. But, you know, we will be discussing preliminary budgets over the next few months with council, so certainly keep them in your, in your thoughts. Moving on to my regular agenda, I'm really excited to bring this forth, this appointment of a new, a new member to the Media Business Authority Board, Danielle Melio de Galbo, who has a beautiful name that I just butchered and apologized, Danielle. She is a co-owner of Lux on State Street. And so she has been coming to a lot of Media Business Authority meetings the last couple of months, has, have really gotten involved, has had a really great voice, and really understands what it takes to be a member of this board. She also represents Personal Services, which is a area on the board that's not currently represented. So this will be a really nice way to round out the talent that's on that board right now. So I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2024-49, appointing Danielle Melio de Galbo to the Media Business Authority Board for a term expiring December 31st, 2026.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2024-49, appointing Danielle Melio de Galbo, thank you for that, to the Media Business Authority Board for a term expiring December 31st, 2026, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Great. The next two items on my agenda are really housekeeping items from the Finance, Finance Department, and it's really talking about minimum municipal obligations for our non-uniformed employees and our police officers. So for the first one, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the 2025 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Non-Uniform Employees.
Motion has been made. Any second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Hold on.
If you could just state them out as well, because we need that for the minutes.
The amount?
Yeah.
Can you state the amount?
Yes, I can state it. 700, which one are you doing? Non-uniform is zero.
Okay. And what have you? What's the amount for police officers? Dollars. Okay. All right. Should I redo that then?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, great. So I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the 2025 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Non-Uniformed Employees for the amount of $0.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2025 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Non-Uniformed Employees in the amount of $0, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the 2025 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Police Officers in the amount of $741,329.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor of adopting the 2025 Minimum Municipal Obligation for Police Officers in the amount of $741,329, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, I'd like to ratify the payment of bills for August. For our general fund, $333,855.2. For the recreation fund, $2,662.95. For the liquid fuels fund, $0. For the capital fund, $369,989.23. For a total of $706,507.20. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, uh, that has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion of the matter? Hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. All those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for August in the amounts outlined by Vice President Romaine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Vice President Romaine? Hearing none, I will pass the gavel. It's going to be a little while. Enjoy it. I, again, I have no liaison announcements. I do have significant items for vote this evening. First item on the agenda for business is the bid approval for Philip Green Park. And I will turn it over to Mr. Mattson again. He gave us all documentation this evening, and I will talk to our solicitor about the best way to word this.
Certainly. Again, so this project, again, is for a park which is in the south, southern portion of our town off Olive Street. Most people in the borough who have not been at the neck of the woods, it may not be familiar with this park, but there's an open tract of land. The planning for this project began, I think, back in 2010 or so with a master plan for both Hootman Park and for Philip, Philip Green Park. This project was prepared by our friends at NV5. They helped us develop the plans. The plan, more or less, is to extend the sidewalk, sidewalk network from South Olive Street all the way down to Lincoln Street. There is an area to, for a viewing area for the area of the green shed into the park, a seating area, some bicycle, bike racks, some trash cans, some signage improvements, and some tasteful improvements to the landscaping. Should be a very nice improvement. This project was fully funded with two grants, fully funded with two grants. I'm delighted tonight to announce that the bid opening is completely within and significantly less than the grants that we received. So this project will be fully funded by the grants. Big thanks to all of our grantors who have supported this project, especially big thanks to Karen Tussack Lux, who, whose magic still influences us today here at Media Borough. So we had the bid opening this morning at 10:00 a.m. Great news, we had nine bidders. Strong interest means that we have, you know, a really good system set up. Low bid was, we, the contractor of SB Conrad Incorporated with a base bid price of $150,000, 430, pardon me, $150,438.10. One of the items in this project was the installation of an additional fence to protect, there's some older post and rail fences out there. The intention was to replace it with some more modernized aluminum 36-inch fence to match Hootman. Again, the, the additional cost of that would be $22,500 for a total bid price, including the add-on, which is what I'm recommending, is that the council award this project to SB Conrad Incorporated at a bid price of $172,938.10. Just to add a little bit of support, I made sure to connect with them today, since this bid opening was this morning, just to make them, to make them aware that this project is a prevailing wage project. And they are aware of that. They're aware of the full scope of the project. This was a very fortunate happenstance that this project came in significantly under budget, but I wanted to make sure that they didn't make any mistakes with the computer program and that they know what they're getting into for that bid price. Again, the next bidder in line was 213. So there's a significant amount of money that they, as they say in the business, they they left on the table. They're okay with that. They still want to move forward. So my recommendation, SB Conrad, at $172,938.10.
So let me just make sure that I'm wording this correctly. The motion would be to approve the bid for Philip Green Park to SB Conrad Incorporated of Chester Heights, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $172,938.10. Is that correct? Okay. So moved.
Uh, second. Did you just make that in the form of a motion?
I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? Sorry.
I do. I have a question.
I forgot. After all that, I forgot I was, I actually had the gavel. My bad. Yes. Ms. Malkun, please comment.
So this, I'm looking at the NV5. I think I pulled it up, the plans, and this preceded me. So sorry, I apologize in advance if I say anything incorrectly, but what happens, it looks to me like the total for the estimate for this project that NV5 created was $206,633. So what happens to that money that is, how much did we get in grant funds?
So we received two grants. We received a grant from Delaware County Greenways Open Space, which is a program they initiated about four years ago. I think we received $126,000 from Delaware County. I believe we also received a grant from DCNR. Was it their Keystone Greenway? It was a DCNR grant for 126.8?
Yes.
So we received a grant total of 126, 126, which is that?
It's 253.
252, 253 and change. What happens to that balance? It's a conversation.
We don't have to return, and we don't have to.
So if I may, so there are a couple of things there. We will do what the grants allow us to do. So the construction price may be, what we just talked about, $172, but there's also the engineering and the design costs that we're going to put in there. So all together, we'll still likely be underneath that 253, but we're just going to put in as much, one grant may allow, engineering, one grant may allow design, so we, they are matching, excuse me, they're matching with each other. So we don't have to put any borough cash in at all.
Okay.
Which is good.
And then the other question about, do we have, does, do we have experience working with Conrad?
I don't have direct experience working with Conrad. I've worked with them in quite some time, but their references came back clean.
Okay.
So they provided, with all of our contracts, they provide a series of documents. And the three references they provided were Indian Lane for the Roast Tree School District, I could bring them back up.
Yeah.
It was Havford High School, and there was another one, and I did, I contacted all the references and they did come back clean.
Great.
But also with that, they did submit all of the associated paperwork. So whenever we do these public projects, there are things like bonds, certificates, insurance certificates, consent of sureties, there's a whole host of legal documents that protects the borough to make sure that there's no, nothing out of the ordinary. And they did submit all that, and it was all satisfactory.
Okay. And the reason why I'm asking is because it is an ecological area, which is pretty sensitive. There is a stream down there, so I just wanted to, I'm asking questions just to make sure that it's done in a mindful and environmentally safe way.
Conrad did attend, we held a pre-bid meeting on the 12th, is that what you want to say? And there were attendees, reps from DePaul's group, reps from Premier's group, and reps from Conrad were there. And we walked through what the expectations were. We walked through the fact that the Shade Tree Commission will have representatives at this project. We walked through that we want to see significant protection of our old growth trees. We want to see a lot of hand digging to be, to make sure that we're being sensitive to this area.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Malkun. Any other discussion on this motion? Hearing none? Sorry, I was just going to tell you what. Oh, my goodness, sorry. All those in favor of the bid approval for Philip Green Park for SB Conrad of Chester Heights in Pennsylvania for $172,938.10, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. My next item, next two items are simply bid agreements with Delaware County for a community development block grant. The first one is an agreement with County of Delaware for the CDBG South Lemon Street Improvement Project, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The second has, a motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, what's the number on that?
Number three.
Just approving the agreement with Delaware, with the County of Delaware for the CBGBG South Lemon Street Improvement Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. My next item is an agreement with the County of Delaware for the CDBG for the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, curb-cut ramp project.
A motion has been.
I make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a quick update. These are both grants that we were awarded. We picked a couple of projects earlier in the year, and we were very lucky to get both of these. So this is simply in the agreement to proceed, correct, Ms. Forman?
Correct.
Thank you.
Like the grant agreement that we're executing, the authority to execute.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of approving the agreement with the County of Delaware for CDBG for ADA curb-cut ramp project, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. My next item is the change order for the Plum Street Park Project. And this is, I think, two-pronged. There's a time, and I think we already approved the financial piece of it. But again, I'll ask Mr. Mattson to describe more when we get to that point, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Do we need additional information for this?
I don't think so.
We can just say, okay.
I think it was just approving a change.
All right. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Mattson to explain the specifics.
Certainly. So this is a change order for the project, and this is something that we had anticipated when we awarded the project back in June 20 of this year. So we had a line item for this, the fountain feature. And what was, what was approved back in June was a very small-scale fountain. The line item was about $24,000. Well, we knew at the time that the full fountain that we had originally conceived back in planning was going to be really expensive. So we had been working with the designers, been working with the contractors, been working with the supplier to come up with an alternate design that we think is tasteful and we think will meet the overall intentions of what the designers had in mind without breaking the bank for want of a better term. So this change order does two things. It adds time to the contract to pin down a completion date of November 27 of 2024, and it moves the line item from $24,000, pardon me, to $140,000. So the only, the net increase is about $116,000. In anticipation, this back at the July meeting, if you'll recall correctly, we did a reappropriation of some funding during the mid-year budget update, and we added $150,000. So if you take that $150,000 that we added and we subtract out what tonight's increase would be to, my math is, I'm getting lost myself.
34,000.
Right. It's still, we're still ahead of the game by $34,000, which, we're keeping our fingers crossed with this project. But so far, so far, so good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any additional discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the change order for Plum Street Park Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is to authorize our solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance allowing for the vacating of the alley from East Second Street to Emerald Street. This, I make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Just as a, again, for those of you that are here, this is a, I guess, a paper street. The residents were all contacted. They're all in support of this, and it's just giving them a little bit more of what's already theirs, I guess, and, you know, for common sense purposes. And, you know, that's really all that this is.
Any additional discussion on the motion?
I think it says, just interjecting here again, I think it says front and Edgemont Streets.
No, it's Emerald. It's Second and Emerald because of the.
You have an older agenda. You have an older agenda.
That's an older agenda.
Got it.
We had to change it because of the specifics of where exactly it is.
All right. I apologize.
No, 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 thank you for that.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing the solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance allowing for the vacating of the alley from East Second Street to Emerald Street, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Now I get to Ordinance 1168 of 2024, policing restrictions on gas-powered leaf blowers. I will bring that forth in the form of a motion.
Mr. President, I'm going to suggest we table this motion based on some of the comments that we heard earlier. I read the ordinance. I think it needs to be kind of tightened up a little bit. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this discussion until we get a little bit more due diligence and kind of tighten up a few words.
If there's a motion, if there's no second, he can table.
Okay, that's what I was confused by. Okay, so.
Check with the solicitor.
Ms. Burns? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we're doing this by process. So a motion was made, and then a motion was made to table it. Do we need to address the first motion? Or what's the, what's the appropriate go-forward?
A motion was.
Are we, are we asking for a second for the first motion or a second for the tabling motion?
Finish the first motion and then, and then address the tabling motion.
Okay. So a motion has been made to pass Ordinance 1168 of 2024, restrictions on the gas-powered leaf blowers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Hearing a second. Is there any discussion?
I want to comment that I paid very careful attention to what was said and what I've seen from our residents, and I have similar concerns regarding enforcement. So I would ask our borough manager to explain where enforcement stands.
As this ordinance came up and was going through committee, we did speak with the appropriate departments, both the police department as well as codes department related to enforcement. So I think the best way is for me just kind of explain step by step. So this will be complaint-driven. People will have to call 911 to report a non-emergency complaint, because the borough opens at 8:30, so if this happens at 8:00, the borough will not be open. So you call 911 to report a non-emergency complaint. They will share that with the police department. The police will go over and ask the, there's almost two different kinds of scenarios. They can either share with the resident that, hey, there's a new ordinance, and just provide some information, say you can't do this at this time. We've spoken internally about having an educational period, so an education, a notification and warning period. If it is a contractor's business, the police will reach out to the worker and ask for the owner's information. This has nothing to do with the worker, right? It's with the owner. So we'll share the new, and share kind of that new information, kind of leave like a handout with the worker to say, hand this to your owner. Now, if he does that or not, who actually, if he or she does that or not, who actually knows? So in addition to that, police will share this information with the codes department. Codes will send a warning letter with information saying this is a new ordinance, please, you know, understand what's going on and provide the information during that kind of educational period. Now, if it is, if we're passed, which we would recommend happening over the next several months, if this were to pass tonight, then next year, we would just recommend moving into the actual enforcement phase that would include the fines. So everything I just mentioned would happen. The police will share the information with codes, and codes will file a complaint in district court. And that complaint is based on information supplied by the police department, and that might require the police officer to appear alongside codes in court. And so either one, either codes or codes and police will be in front of the judge, the district justice, and they will recommend the fees that are according to our ordinance. And the first fee is $50, the second fee is, second time offense is $100. Any offense after that is $200 per occasion. And we will put it before the district justice, and we'll see what he or she does.
And just to clarify, the time from the police department would be contractual or overtime?
So the police, the police court time is based upon the CBA, the Consolidated Benefits Agreement, so it's based upon their union contract, and there is a set amount of time that they have to get paid overtime for.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that? So that, you know, that's concerning to me, you know, as far as being, and I thought I heard the word "good governance" tonight. That is what concerns me as well. You know, I don't want an unintended consequence of the borough paying a lot of overtime for police officers where there's a $50 fine or a $100 fine. So I'm going to stop talking now and allow Mr. Boyer to go ahead with what he would say.
So I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion because of the issues, the ordinance has some loopholes in it. We also have a lot of boroughs that are around us in townships trying to do the same thing, so I think it kind of helps to have some experience and see some more ideas related to that. So that's why I make a motion that we table this discussion at least until the October cycle and then try to get ourselves a little bit more specifics, especially with the, the rollout of the ordinance.
So I'm able to, are we?
Sorry. Does anyone? I'm getting used to this. Does anyone second the motion to table?
Okay, but just to clarify, we don't need to vote on the first motion even though it was seconded.
No.
And we had discussion on that.
Not, not right now. If someone has a second of the motion to table, then we can discuss the motion to table.
Okay. So a motion has been made to second, I'm sorry, a motion has been made to table the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second to table the ordinance, and now we vote on that one? Yeah, okay, great.
Can we have a discussion?
I'm sorry, you're right. Yes. Sorry, I don't think I've ever done a tabling apologies on that. Yes, any discussion, Ms. Malkun, please.
Thank you. So I do hear, one thing that did stand out to me is adding in, like dismissal time. So I think that if we are, if we are concerned with school commuters, and school commuters can be coming anywhere from the borough, it doesn't just, it's not just isolated to around the school. So commuters can be coming from anywhere in the borough, walking with their caregivers. So I do acknowledge that adding at dismissal time would, I think, add a stronger ordinance. And I just want to say that, you know, where we are at this, at this moment in time, using two-stroke powered engines are archaic, and they are the most toxic machines out there. They are far worse than any emissions from any car. Research is out there. Look it up, read about it. They're caustic, they're toxic. There's no reason why we should be using any of them anymore. This was a first step in us taking a phased approach to trying to wean ourselves off of two-stroke engines. It may not be a perfect ordinance. Nothing is really perfect, but I think it was our first attempt, and I am in full support in finding a way to move this forward, because I ultimately think that it's better for our environment and it's better for our community health.
Thank you, Ms. Malkun. Any additional comments, discussion?
I wanted to make it clear that I am very much in favor of ordinance. I just don't think this is the right one at the right time yet, and I think it needs a little bit more work. So I agree with Jen. I think there's no reason that we need these machines anymore, but I think we have to be very careful with what we do at this point, and that's why I prefer to table it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. Additional comments?
I'll, oh, go ahead, Lisa.
I was just going to say that, agreed that this is an extremely pollutant two-stroke engine. It's really not necessary to have it. We had thought about, at CDC, we had talked about the after-school walking and so forth, but as it turns out, there wasn't a need. We spoke to a lot of people in the community, and the landscapers like to come in and do their thing early in the morning, and we were just trying to be actually doing good governance by not infringing on landscapers and so forth to say, no, you can't do it in the afternoon either, only because there wasn't a need for it. So generally speaking, if you're walking in the borough in the morning from 8 to 9, they're everywhere. They're everywhere, down Front Street, down State Street, and so forth. So that was the reason why we were trying to just say, you know what, we're going to make this as good governance, as small as possible to infringe on that. I personally am feeling as if the landscapers, I know somebody said something about they're making money too, and it's true, they're absolutely making money. I feel like we're talking about one hour, and maybe we didn't, you know, roll out some good education on this before tonight. I mean, we could have done a better job. I don't really feel like the landscapers are going to have a problem going to somebody else's place to work from 8 to 9 and then come back into the borough at 9. I don't. And they do have the option of having electric leaf blowers or rake. Just saying. So I am in favor of this ordinance. If we were voting tonight, I would vote yes. I strongly feel as if this is something that needs to be done for our kids, for anybody else who's walking from 8 to 9. I walk with my kid either to school or around right after he gets off to school, but if we are going to table it for another month, I'm willing to talk about strengthening the ordinance, but I would really like to see something moving forward. The last thing I was going to say is just to Mr. Boyer's point, there was, there were some other communities that were looking at phasing out these -- but they were doing it in a different way, and this is not, you know, trying to take over everybody's two-stroke engines right now. This is a totally different situation. We are really, truly looking at one hour for the kids to get to school. In fact, the way the ordinance had been written is only during the school year. Like, we're really just focusing on young lungs at play, not going after everybody all day long. That is not this ordinance's point, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gelman. Other comments?
I just want to echo what everybody has said. I think that it needs to be stated, a great thank you to the members of our EAC who did several years of research on this and brought all of this to us, especially the health concerns. You know, I think a lot of people were concerned about the noise, I understand that, but it was really the toxicity of the two-stroke engines that really turned me on this one. And I did some research and I looked into it, and, you know, the things that are out there from two-stroke engines, it's kind of frightening. I also appreciate what Kevin said as far as the concerns that we have. I don't want to pass an ordinance, you know, that is going to impact the borough in a negative way or in any way put us in a place where there's an unintended consequence. And I also want to echo what Lisa said, that I think I count at least four of us who are strongly in favor of some restriction. I just want to get it right. You know, I hear the concerns of people in the community, and I think getting the education out there and letting people know the reasons, the purposes for it, we're not going to please everybody, we understand that, but we want to do it in a way where we are governing well and we are protecting our kids. I mean, that's really what this came down to. So, you know, I appreciate what everybody thought, I appreciate the motion to table. You know, I wish we had gotten to this point at our workshop meeting two weeks ago, we just didn't have all that information at that time, and then we could have, you know, held it off a little bit. But I appreciate the motion to table and I support it, but I wanted to make sure to clarify that it's not going away.
Thank you, President Pekoff. Additional comments? I do have a question. If we do table this tonight, Ms. Gelman, you mentioned, you know, that this would come up next month. Is next month enough time for revisions to go through committee, to go through the solicitor? Like, I'm just curious if that's a realistic timetable.
It's not for me.
The solicitor, I believe if something is put on the table, it stays there until it's taken off. Is that correct?
I believe so, but I will confirm with that.
Yeah, I think that's how it works. It does not have to come up in October, so if we don't find it is ready in October.
Sorry, I don't think -- Lisa made -- I'm sorry. I thought I heard that Lisa said, if we table it this month and we relook at this next month.
Oh, that was, I think Kevin had said something about October.
Okay. I'm just asking if we do have concerns and if there are some, if the ordinance seems to be really looked at and maybe strengthened in some ways, like what is a timeframe for that to happen? I ask because it's September, and leaf season is what, like 45 days? So, you know, I
Might I recommend that
Like, if this comes up in February, it's like, okay, cool. Like, that's sort of silly.
I'm with you. I'm not understanding, especially if we're not enforcing for like six months, I'm not fully understanding why we can't move ahead and still, I don't know, maybe you can't pass it and then revise it, but we're not enforcing it for a while. And I think we do need to start educating, especially the businesses that are having the landscapers out there from 8 to 9 on school days now. It would -- I don't know.
I think that there was a
Sorry, we have some other
Oh, no, no, it's fine, it's fine. No, I just appreciate everybody bringing these comments of, yeah, I think education's really important, and, you know, I live here because we all look out for each other. It's a great community, so it does give me like a little bit of disappointment when we offer something that is new, and sometimes it just, it just needs a little bit of work to get the communications right on it, and then people kind of, you know, run with it as a complete negative, as like, oh, this is a total -- no, it's not. What's on the table is not a total ban. So I just encourage us to maybe look at this for a little bit longer and think about, I just had it in my head, but, you know, just think about how to get this message out and to make sure that people understand the enforcement, how we're going to look at enforcement, if we're even going to go as far as what is in the ordinance, if we need to, you know, clean that up a little bit. But yeah, I mean, I understand, I would definitely support it too tonight, but it really does need more, a little bit more work. That's all. I mean, and also, it's just more, I think we really have to put more education just the way that we put the plastic bag ban, because that took time. That took a lot of time.
It did.
But we also didn't enforce that right away either.
Right, right. We didn't enforce that right away. So we just want to help people understand that, you know, we just want to help people with this new change. That's it. This one-hour change.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Any other comments or discussion?
Just quickly.
Trey, I think you're the last one to go.
I, yeah, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Before you add in, if you don't mind.
Well, I mean, everybody else had a say, so I suppose I should make a comment. Generally, I mean, I'm kind of in favor of tabling it because, you know, given the sheer amount of public comment we've gotten on this, both, you know, via email and in person, it's worth it to at least put it back on the back burner just to have more conversation around it. But besides that, I think if we're going to really push forward and we all, and it sounds like everyone's really in favor of it, we should at least definitely encourage more education in the coming months before we put the ordinance in place, is my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. President Pekoff, did you want to add anything?
Certainly. I agree 100% with the need for education. I agree 100%. Hopefully, that's going to start tonight, and I hope that the people who are here, who have heard this, and the people who are watching or had sent emails in, will pay attention to what we were saying tonight. I also think we have a newsletter, we have opportunities. One thing that was mentioned in an email comment was to talk to the landscapers. We did that with the plastic bag ordinance. I don't know that we did that with this. I would strongly recommend, if possible, to bring together our EAC and our MVA, just to have a meeting and a discussion to see, is it, you know, is it something that's going to significantly impact landscaping companies? Are they able to do it? We know we've talked to Mike Green about it from the borough's perspective, we heard about the replacement of the lithium-ion batteries, but those are rechargeables. You know, is, are there other methods? Are there other things that are available? Can we work with both our environmental and our business communities to come to some consensus? But again, I want to make it very clear, we support something to protect young lungs, and, you know, we want to get it right.
Thank you, President Pekoff. Any additional discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table ordinance 1168 of 2024, restrictions on gas-powered leaf blowers, please say aye.
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 Can you, sorry, please, okay. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion to table passes four, five, yeah, 5-2. I actually realized I didn't, but, I'm sorry. The motion passes 4-3. Sorry. Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Any questions for
We're going to take a brief break. Thirty-second break.
No, can we just finish? Can we just, are there any questions for Mr. Pekoff? All right, we'll turn this back over to Mr. Pekoff. That's just a better, a cleaner break.
Thank you. Now, we'll take a break. Very brief break. Okay, we are back. Okay, thank you very much, Dave. We'll now move on to public safety, recreation, and our civil service commission. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few liaison announcements. REC has a full slate. I'm looking at the events from those that have happened. There's one, it's probably not, yeah, it's probably over there. There was volleyball down on the field, if you saw that right here in Borough Hall. That's been a monthly event. That's one of the new things that REC is doing. This weekend is garage sale day.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? This weekend is garage sale day, Saturday and potentially Sunday, and also for the first time, a porch fest. So throughout the borough, there will be 39 music acts between noon and 3 o'clock on someone porches, someone driveways, along with the garage sale that's going on. So it's going to be happening Saturday this weekend in the borough, so hopefully everybody will be out. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, I think it will. So a very new event, and hopefully it works out. As far as civil service, as President Pekoff announced, Lisa, my colleague next to me, will be having an announcement regarding the police chief, where we've made some decisions regarding that. We are going to be hiring a new patrolman. We've administered the civil service test and are going through the process of hiring a patrolman because our intent is to move the officers up and have the replacements come from with it. So there's that. The item that I have for business tonight is to approve the mass gathering permit for the Media Halloween Parade. This will be on Saturday, October 26, on State Street from 9 until 1, and the rain date is the next day on Sunday. That would be a Saturday, so, yeah, I make that in form of a motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter?
Just to say, woo, Halloween parade.
Yay!
For selfish reasons, I hope it rains. I have something going on that Saturday, so. Hearing no more discussion, no, it's a course that I'm taking. It's, you know, one of those things, I'll just
Take that back.
Can you erase that? In any case, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the Media Halloween Parade to be held on Saturday, October 26, 2024, from 9 to 1, 9:00 a.m. to 1 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, October 27, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And I neglected one other thing, and as I mentioned to Michael earlier, we are doing the senior luncheon. You may get tickets as of October 1st. You have to be a borough resident, and you have to be over 60. The date is November 16th, I believe it's 12 to 2, but obviously, when you get the ticket, to find out when the event is. And potentially, it's not officially, but potentially, there'll be a movie night on September 28, but that has to be approved, so stay tuned for that. You can check the borough website to find out when it is approved. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boyer?
I was just going to say, I'm pretty sure it's supposed to be Hocus Pocus, which is going to be fun.
Well, it says unofficially, if that's what
It's not official. It's not official.
Well, when you say hocus pocus, that means it has to be official. I mean, that's what all my friends have said growing up, so, in any case, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Hearing no more questions for Mr. Boyer, we'll move on now to personnel, environmental advisory council, and library. If you'd like to speak, there will be a chance later in the meeting. We do have a second opportunity for public comment if you'd like to speak. Councilperson Lisa Gelman, Ms. Gelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I do have a couple announcements. EAC will be at EcoFest, that's next Saturday, on the 28th of September, from 10 to 2, in Heritage Park, which is at Fifth and Brumal. It's not an EAC official event, it's actually with TTGM, so the transition, oh my God.
Transition Town of Greater Media.
Right, thank you. Transition Town of Greater Media. It screws me up now that they have a G there. It's the 28th, from 10 to 2, Heritage Park, which is at Fifth and Brumal. That's the EcoFest. The library book sale is coming up next month, the 19th of October. I think it's like two days after our next legislative meeting, but I think they are still collecting books for another, last week of collecting books. They are also doing porch fest, so the library will have a band on their porch on Saturday. Super excited for that. That'll be fun.
Hey, Lisa, can I just add that the library is also looking for volunteers that day?
Oh.
Or for the three days.
Okay, yes. If people are interested in volunteering, I know there is a sign-up genius that is moving around the library, so if there are any volunteers that are interested, they can contact the library for that.
I won't be able to volunteer this year because someone's getting married that day, but definitely will be stopping by.
Okay. Well, it's a whole weekend event, you know. It's Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Finally, big announcement about our chief. Council would like to share an update on the police chief hiring process. It is, of course, one of the most critical positions that's providing service for our community. A lot of groundwork has been completed over the past several months, including informal conversations with officers as well as formal conversations and interviews. There have been people who thought perhaps we should be looking at an external search, and of course, practices like that can be helpful. We have chosen to promote from within for several key reasons. Most importantly, we have an amazing cohesive, well-functioning department, and we want to continue with that moving forward. Secondly, we want to have the next police chief to have a deep community tie and relationships within our residents, our businesses, and local organizations. We were seeking an experienced administrator that has qualifications to lead and someone who already holds the respect of his fellow officers. Considering this criteria, we can think of none better than our current Lieutenant John McCormick. He checks all the boxes that we were looking for in this position, and so I am pleased to bring forward the official recommendation next month to promote Lieutenant McCormick to the position of police chief effective November 1st. I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilperson Gelman? Hearing none, we'll move on to Shade Tree Commission. Councilperson Jen Melkun, Ms. Melkun.
Thank you so much. I just have one brief announcement. Shade Tree was at Dining Under the Stars last night for a tree giveaway, and they gave away 50 trees, which was really incredible. The, I have notes here from Chris, the chair of the committee, saying that there was a steady stream of people all night, and they were talking about trees. So they were blown away by the engagement and interest, so I think that that is a really great sign, and thanks to our Shade Tree Commission for being out there last night. I don't have any other announcements.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Melkun. Any questions? And thank you to Shade Tree for doing that. What a great idea.
I was just going to say that I walked down State Street yesterday, kind of towards the evening, and it was really fun to see people with their trees right next to them as they had dinner. It was adorable. It was like, here's a tree, and I'm having dinner. And yeah, they got rid of 50 trees, and I think they had 10 left, so those last 10 might be at EcoFest. So show up, get a tree.
Any more questions for Councilperson Gelman? I'm sorry, for Councilperson Melkun. Thank you very much. Hearing none, we'll move on to our final opportunity for public comment and privilege of the floor. Again, any emails that come into comments at Media Borough can be read. Are there any that have come in, Ms. Rapinoe?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Rita Jordan Keller, South Avenue. I would like to voice my concern and vote for the proposed gas blower ban that council is discussing tonight. No address. Rita, a second time. I would like to know the progress in making the 300 block of South Avenue one-way. Address, address, yep. Mary Bannon, North Jackson Street. In regard to the proposed ban on leaf blowers during the time that children and crossing guards would be exposed to the fumes and noise generated, there is absolutely no reason that this ban could not take effect. And the last one, Will House, West Second Street. I'm voicing my support for the proposed gas-powered blower ban. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Council President, would you like to address those first before I give my comment?
Well, I think those comments, you know, are helpful to us going forward in what we're going to be doing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, no, no, no worries. Thank you, Mr. Straw.
Michael Straw, 499 West Jefferson. Two points I wanted to make. First off, I wanted to thank the council for tabling the ordinance. I'm not saying that I don't think that an ordinance should take place. I agree with you. I think that there could be, there could be an ordinance that we could have, you know, in the future that helps with public health. I think that it just needs to be tweaked. I think that there's, as we heard, there was, you know, concerns regarding, you know, police overtime and whatnot. Let's just get it right. That's all. I think that, you know, it's wonderful that we have ordinances. It's what makes our town special in terms of, you know, essentially having laws that differentiate ourselves between us, Swathmore, Clifton Heights. Every town is different. Not everybody's the same. If we were, we'd just be Delaware County. So the second thing I want to mention is that we are actually very close to a national election, and it would be remiss of me to mention that October 21st is the voter registration deadline, everybody. This is a public service announcement. October 21st is the voter registration deadline. If you are going to be 18 years old on or before Election Day, you can register to vote. Not everybody knows that, but it's important to know. If you're 18 years old and you're not old enough to register to vote by the 21st of October, but you are old enough to be registered to vote and vote and be 18 by November 5th, you can register to vote then. Just simply go on to www.vote.pA.gov to learn more information. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kellogg?
Yeah, Kevin Kellogg, 1 East Jefferson, whatever. Do I need to say all that? Okay, Media, Pennsylvania, things like that. I have three things. One is, I have a lot of bikers in front of my house that drive right through the stop signs and stuff like that. I think it's against the law to do that. And I'm not sure there's any police action around that. I'm not sure how many people. So Mr. McMahon, if you could talk to the police and see how many tickets have been issued to people who drive through the stop signs on the bike.
They see it, they get them.
Yeah, yeah, but they don't monitor. So the other thing is, on that topic is the electric bikes. You know, can they drive on the sidewalk? And can they drive in the street? We're not really educating our people, you know, to, you know, if you're under 13, can you drive on the sidewalk? You know, under 25 miles an hour, things like that. There's no communication about, I use the word trikes, you know, to go through there that educates people in terms of riding safely. If you don't have a license, if you have a license, how fast can you go and things like that? I think there's a deficiency in the communication, well, understanding and communication in terms of biking scooters and stuff like that. And maybe Kevin, that's your, I don't know. Who knows? So there's also the parking conversation with the county, with right outside the county courthouse. Is that conversation going? You know, I heard on the county side that it's happening. I just want to, you know, clarify, you know, that we're trying to understand how to allow